...that they can do. We're basically going ahead to destroy the use of the park for our residents, and it's very, very sad to me that that's happening.
So, first off, you know, I believe that we have a need for the services mentioned in this. We just talked about the need for scheduling and things like that. You know, and from the proposal, from the input, from the suppliers, catering by Dana appears to be more than qualified to perform the duties. However, the concept presented and suggested, I think, late last year as we first started discussing it, requires a little more thinking because I think moving ahead too quickly and moving ahead on this tonight with this contract will potentially result in unintended consequences. And, you know, what's proposed here, the structure does not appear to be, to me, to be one that's going to ensure that the park is going to be available for residents, for their enjoyment, and thereby meeting the intent of the will which gifted the park to the town. For me, there's still a lot of open questions, some of which were just brought up by Councilmember Dobby. We still can have the events in the park. Events are still going on today, okay? They're just not being monitored, and they could probably, and they're probably, we're missing out on, and it's not solving some conflicts. But we, as a council, have discussed lots of things as late as just a few months ago about limitations on events. We've discussed having no more than three weekends per month. We've discussed having no major weekend, no major events on three-day weekends because we want to let the park be open for our residents to use it when they have time. We've discussed eliminating corporate functions in the park. We've discussed limiting the parking, as I mentioned earlier, to eliminate visitors from parking on the grass. Some of these items, we've agreed as a council, and we've agreed since earlier, and we've agreed in the meetings. We've come to some sort of consensus on that. In others, we've had agreements that have been passed down from councils, and just as the council turns over and over, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to revisit things, although times do change. These are all key things that need to be set forth to ensure the long-term beauty of our gift and for the enjoyment of our residents and guests as they use the park. The park is a place for athletics, family time, quiet picnics, et cetera. The first and foremost, client of the park should be those who pay for it. That's the Atherton residents, the taxpayer. The Atherton foundations and the organizations which regularly collect and raise money and then reinvest it in our park. This was never intended to be a vehicle for revenue growth. The park was not set up for that. It was not willed to the town to be a revenue growth. If it's going to be that way, we should just sell it. The response that I reviewed has many positive attitudes or attributes. I think, however, a revenue share arrangement encourages the supplier to work to sell the park and market the park, which is how the supplier is going to grow their business. This is evidenced by the comments in the proposal where the supplier has indicated upon contract signature they will immediately contact their corporate clients to make them aware of the venue. To me, this is concerning. We've had a lot of discussions about how Google or some other corporate organization took up all the parking places and no one could, people couldn't even come to drop their kids off for soccer games. So this is a problem, the corporate events, and I thought we'd actually eliminated those. For me, that's very, very concerning. A revenue share arrangement, for me, is not the appropriate vehicle for this contract. Unlike the building department structure, which is a structure where InterWest cannot necessarily on their own, on their own initiative, grow their business for themselves, this one allows for it and actually encourages it. That's how they make their money. I suggest that we actually take a step back, get our house in order, and maybe relook at this one last time before we enter into a contract. This will allow us then to revise an RFP so that no one gets disappointed. The worst thing could be the town gets disappointed because we've done this, or worse yet, the supplier decides that, you know, we can't let them grow and they're losing money and they don't want to continue to invest and perform the work. And so that would be, that's not a win-win. That's a lose-lose for all of us. I think it's important that we keep our eyes on what's important the most here. I suggest in this case, it's not the money, but it's our residents and it's our park. So I'd like to say that we would not make a decision on this, and we would have further discussion on finalizing the rules and regulations and then make those clear, and then reissue the RFP.
Thank you. Councilmember Vice Mayor?
Well, I haven't been involved in this discussion in the depth that the other council have. I guess my view is that the park is a critical resource for the town and that we need to protect that resource. I think that we can decide to use that resource. However, the people indicate to us that they want to use it. That is why I supported the Little League decision because it was clearly decided. I don't have any indication that we, that people see the park as a revenue source. So I agree with that comment. I think that, I'm not as disturbed as Bill is with the idea of a revenue share because the contract allows the town to terminate the contract at will. There's not any inhibition to do that if we decide it's a problem, which means that you're going to work things out with your vendor. And so I'm not that disturbed about that. I am, but I do think that it's really important that we send the right message and that we not send a message that says that we're open to using the park more than, you know, for events, whether they be weddings or corporate events, more than we, as a town, really want to use it. I think that's critical. And I can see that there, I can imagine that there would be a lot of problem if, in fact, there was the demand to use this facility, which is really a pretty fabulous facility and fairly unique on the peninsula, for weddings where, I mean, if they were happening every weekend, I can imagine that would be pretty disturbing. So, but I have not been involved in this discussion around this limitation. So I'd be interested in other people's comments on that because if you all have discussed it in depth, then, you know, I'd like the benefit of that. I'd be very open to the idea of making sure that the park isn't available for rental on certain occasions where we think that residents of the town want it, you know, in a manner where there's not, where it's not rented out and where you're not running into a wedding every time you turn around.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Lewis?
So I think I spoke out of turn earlier, but, so my views are that we really do need to move ahead with this. We have talked about it and talked about it and talked about it. Some of the comments, my fellow councilmembers, that have been raised that we're going to have weddings 365 days of the year, it's absurd. There's no way a wedding is going to occur in that park 365 days of the year. There are certain events that our town holds on an annual basis that we can clearly make as blackout dates. There are certain, there are seasons of weddings. We're not just talking about weddings. We're talking about other corporate events. The issue of the Google event came up, 800 people and no parking. That was, you know, with these restrictions, you know, we're not going to have that happen. I think creating the demand, the requirement that we have shuttle services to minimize the impact of parking on the park facilities is critical in this agreement. We need to tighten up the agreement. But as Vice Mayor DeGoye said, that the way the contract is written is that we can get out of it if it's not working. The caterer can get out of it if it's not working. What we need is someone, a professional organization to manage and book events for us at the park that will create a safer environment for our park and for our park users, which are our residents and which are, this is an open park. We cannot close the park to non-residents. We are an open park, and we have to, we have to acknowledge that. So there has been discussion about creating scheduled blackout dates, trying to anticipate when our residents may want to use the facilities. I think that is fraught with a lot of problems. I don't think that we can say that, you know, every third weekend we're going to block that out, and then if a resident calls and says that they want to book an event on the second weekend, we'll say, no, you're going to be booked on the third weekend. Or it's, you know, that's, you can't kind of do that. It's, it's a business. You know, it's not a perfect science, but we've got to move forward. Clearly, I have heard councilmembers who are sitting on this DS right now that, that the park has to be a revenue generating vehicle and support and sustain itself. And now that is being turned around and not said. So I've always said that it is an amenity for our residents. No public park ever sustains itself from revenue. But it's foolish for us to turn revenue away when we are increasing the maintenance, we're investing more of our money. Thankfully, we have more revenue from our general fund to invest in our park maintenance. We just passed $100,000 in maintenance enhancements a couple of months ago. So that's a good thing. I know the dames do a great job in making fundraisers and donations. That's hit and miss. I mean, it's not what we're talking about here. It's an amenity. We have turned away requests, not only from residents to rent the facilities, but committees of our, of our town to hold events there back in 2011, when arbitrarily, and it did not go through Park and Rec, to categorically stop weddings at the park midstream in 2011. And so it's just been that way. I think what we've got here, a revenue sharing situation, everybody's going to work together. They're going to do the coordination of the events and take the load off of our maintenance staff and our other consultants. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great, and if it doesn't work, everybody will know it. But now's the time, and we have discussed it. We have talked about it. Things that Council Member Widmer brought up about things that we had discussed, we did not act on those. We did not say we all agree. I think that what we all agreed is that we need to restart the weddings. We want to hire an event coordinator to manage the events at the park, and this looks like a good opportunity and a way of doing it.
Thank you. It's, I just want to make a few comments that, you know, one, we clearly could have done better at preparing this before us today. And disappointed that it looks to you, the public, that it is sloppy, but the general concept of what we need to get done is a event coordinator for our park. We did discuss, and I think that we will have to make sure that related to the volume of flow, volume of traffic, size of events are controlled by us to make sure that we don't have an issue. And the, I think the tier number was 200 cars. The 200 cars and impact and valet service with Little League, there may only be 100 cars. And I think that that's something that we have to work with staff as well before certain events are approved to measure that impact and then maybe not say that at the 200-car mark that we trigger valet. It may be, in fact, with other events in the park that it's triggered at 100. And I think that that's something that we can work with the vendor with the language that we do have. But also remembering the fact that it isn't cheap to maintain that park and the generated revenue that comes from events, which, you know, two years ago, there wasn't an event in the park that could have been an event in the park, and there is no event, so we won't do events. And now we're at the extreme opposite pendulum when we have somebody sitting before us that is able to potentially manage our events, that we're at the different spectrum, that we're not going to have a parking space for the next 365 days. There is going to be a middle ground in there somewhere, and I think that that's where reality is going to come into play. But I do believe as a town, we need somebody to handle that part of our process. And that degree of professionalism, and as I've heard repeated by other councilmembers here, is that we're trying it out, and you're going to be trying it out. So you don't like us, you're probably going to tell us, well, that's it for us. And the same applies to us. But I do think that there's a need for us to move forward and with the language that we do have and, you know, maybe putting it a little bit together as we work forward. But it seems that we have that language already in here. So it's discretionary on staff. And I would like to say that, you know, a regular calendar that you can monitor as the town manager so that you can see that our concerns are being overseen. So I think at this point, I'd like to call a motion to approve this contract and see if that's something my fellow councilmembers want to do.
Could you approve it in concept, subject to revisions by staff to add some of those issues that were raised tonight back into it?
Absolutely. I'm agreeing with that. So I would allow that amendment as well.
I'll make the motion that we award the contract for Hobart Palmer Park Event Management Services to Catering by Dana. And with the changes that staff is going to bring back to us, make city attorney.
I would suggest you just direct the city attorney to work with the city manager to incorporate the changes.
Okay. To make sure that the contract matches council's decisions and the RFP that was sent out, including valet and shuttle services to mitigate traffic and parking, and also to have a sensitivity to our residents for scheduling and, you know, that we're not going to have a wedding every day.
With all due respect, how do we, what's the vehicle for doing that? You know, and what's, and what's the, what's the rationale?
Technically.
Having the discussion so that we could then put it in and make sure it's agreeable with the event coordinator after we define those in the next meeting or the next study session or something like that, and then make sure that they're okay in putting it in there. Right, right now, where we are is we're saying, okay, well, we've had some discussion, and I don't know what we're going to agree to put in. I might vote for it, I might not.
It was already in the RFP that the Catering by Dana was calling to.
No, but you know, there are major issues that are not just a subject of amendment to this contract. There's major issues that have been brought up today. Do we want the capability to have the park used 365 days a year? That's what this contract says.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
I just want to, that the 365, they're going to be responsible for managing the park 350, 365 days a year because there may be an event like a picnic or something, and then they know who's coming into the park, and they're going to be our eyes and ears to the park. Right now, we don't have that, and that's where we're getting some problems with, you know, vandalism or, you know, unreal, garbage and stuff. So that's for the 365 days a year. I mean, I can't imagine there are weddings, you know.
Well, I would say this again, that, you know, the amendments that we want to put in there are huge. I think that what we need to come up with before we approve this are some of the rules that we've talked about. Do we want 365 days a year, or do we want to put in some of the things we've discussed earlier, three weddings a month, or some number of weddings allowed per month, not allowed on holiday weekends? These are the things that we need to put in here before, as far as I'm concerned, I could approve this contract.
That's what was approved by the council when the RFP went out. It included the rental application stating the event type, size, and duration must be submitted to the city manager for approval prior to the event. Only one wedding will be permitted per day, and the number of guests is limited to 200. And that's the size of the event. And renters are celebrated to provide other services such as private security, valet parking, et cetera, as we require per event. If we feel the event's going to be impacting the park, valet service, bus service, whatever, we put that on that condition of the application and control it.
Well, I never remember the council approving 365 days a year, never.
Well, I think that, I think that, City Manager, I think that, first off, when we talk about weddings, for example, as is Councilwoman Lewis pointed out, they're normally on the weekends, and they're not all the time. We agree with that, okay? So when people are talking about one event a day, that's, I mean, that's one of the things I can remember the discussion that we've had with regards to weddings. There would only be one. We would not have two because they didn't use to have sometimes two.
Correct.
Okay? There would be one. So that's where a one event a day might come from, okay? However, when we're now talking about corporate events, which I thought we had gotten rid of, now, and what was alarming to me was, you know, they want to grow their business, and so they've got a lot of corporate contracts. So suddenly, we could have a plethora of corporate contracts. Will there be one a day? I doubt it, okay? But, but there could be more than what we bargained for. And so one a day is not a good metric for me, not knowing, you know, the unknown unknown, okay? One weekend event, you know, during the wedding season, okay, as long as, you know, they're not, again, what we talked about is having maybe three-day weekends, not booking. But we have talked about some of these things. We've talked about 125 people as opposed to 200. And yes, did we talk about them? Yes. Did we come to, we just had a discussion. We didn't take a vote on any of it. So, so the concept that, hey, we've talked about those, yes. We have talked about them. Have we ever, you said, whoa, we got some consent, you know, seeing what people are saying, and that's it. But we've never really had a noticed meeting where we were going to vote on this was going to be the restriction. So in some cases, yes, we don't want to have the unintended consequences, as I said, that we have here on this contract, like happened when we said, let's get rid of these weddings and large events in the park, and then the next day, one of our residents passed away, and they want to have a memorial service, and we were in a bind, and we had, you know, work. Unfortunately, they, they decided they were going to go somewhere else for the meeting, and that was a very sad situation for us all. And so that's why we said, let's go back and relook at it. So I just think, again, we're putting the cart before the horse.
Absolutely.
We don't have to approve the contract that's on the table today. We could refine it and then move forward.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Mayor, I think we've, staff has, staff has heard a lot of comments tonight that I think we're clearly lacking from this agreement. There are reasons, but there are no excuses. My suggestion is that there's no way of knowing who's going to die tomorrow, nor is there any way of knowing who's going to get married this June. And the only way that this, that this contract is going to make any sense to anyone is if it has enough flexibility in there that the schedule can be handled by somebody who will have the authority to say to the contractor, that's too many. The contractor's going to need to run events through the town, and the town's going to have maximum control. I don't think there's anybody in this room that has a Ouija board that can determine ahead of time. Anything short of, I will guarantee you, it will not be 365 days a year. I can't guarantee it won't be 125 days because I don't know. But I think I can write a contract that says you have to be cognizant of parking. It can't be more than 200 cars, but it might be limited to less on days when there are other events in the park. Maybe taking into account seasonal adjustment because summertime, the park's going to be used more than the wintertime if it ever does rain. And so I think we can put in there the discretion back in the hands of the city manager who runs the town on a day-to-day basis. And if the council isn't happy with the impacts that arise from it, then we can go back to the vendor and say, look, we need to adjust this. And if they, if that doesn't work, this, this contract has the maximum flexibility, zero days' notice to cancel this contract, zero. I can't make it any better than that. And I think with that, it's got as much protection in it as we're ever going to get. And I think that it get with, with, it, it needs to have the city manager put back into the position of control. And I think staff, staff had a concept that the contractor would be doing all the bookings and essentially taking our role. That's, that's not going to work. It really has to have the town be in control with the contractor basically working for us and providing us with the input. And if it doesn't work, it's easy to stop. Well, easy to stop booking for the future. If, remember, one of the problems was for June weddings, you've got to book them in January, February, or they're just, they're gone. And that's why I think the time is of the essence for staff if we're going to, if we're going to have any weddings.
Corporate events are.
Corporate events are.
They're allowed now. So why don't, there's a motion on the table. Do I have a second on the motion?
I will second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed. I'm going to oppose it.
I'll vote for it, but I want to make some clarification, which I don't know that it needs to be an amendment.
Okay.
But I want to make some clarification because I think there's some, what the, the indic, I mean, I'm fine to give the control to the city manager to manage this. It's going to manage it in the best interest of the town. But I think that you need to, and I think it would make the council more comfortable if you defined specific triggers for what requires valet park. I think that there's a clear indication that I strongly support that we don't want cars parking on the grass. So when you get to a point where there's going to be need to be cars parking on the grass, that should trigger valet parking, whether that's coming from a wedding or Little League and, and a corporate event or whatever. At some point, there, I think those triggers need to be clearly defined. The second thing that, that I think, there was unresolved discussion around is the issue of whether there should be any blackout dates during the year. And I don't want to tie the hands of contractor. They need to run a business. But I also feel very sympathetic if, if there's certain dates where, like three-day weekends, which would be better for residents to not be impacted by weddings. And I haven't been involved in that assessment, so, and I haven't seen any evaluation of that from staff. So I would appreciate some assessment of that, whether there might be some dates that would be, you know, maybe there's been discussion, I'm just ignorant of it.
Go ahead.
There, I think there are blackout dates already being put on the calendar that Steve talked about, like the, the art in the park weekend, the Easter egg hunt, and, you know, that is kind of the holiday tea, the holiday tea that's held at the pavilion, the jazz festival. So there are already, but, you know, I think all your comments are very well.
My guess is that those are in the RFP, but they're not in the contract.
Actually, the contract says, any date that they haven't booked themselves, we have the right to blackout. We have the right to use it for ourselves, use it anyway we want, or say, you can't use this date.
But we might want to black, but, but for example, we might want to blackout Memorial Day weekend, or.
I think.
I just like the assessment from staff.
I think the vice mayor's talking something different than what the councilmember Lewis is speaking of.
These are for events. He's talking about.
Community events. You're speaking of an open weekend where there's no town event going on and there's no, especially.
I think that's very difficult to do.
That's what we talked about. Yes, yes, indeed. The contract does call out the special events, the Easter egg hunt and things like that. I did see those. I did see those in there, and it said that they would have priority, but we're talking about other events. Like we just did discuss here, three-day weekends, when more people are in town, certain ones are different than others, but where they would go out and, you know, the park needs to be open.
Or you've got the, you've got the vendor here in the audience. Perhaps they could speak to what that might do to their considered operation.
Please do, if we can have one of the most vocal of the group, let's say.
This is Stephanie. Well, in our experience, three-day weekends are big weekends for weddings because families available, because people are in town and they can get their family here. So, that would impact us if you closed the park on three-day weekends. I understand your concerns, but you can do a wedding on a Saturday and a Sunday because people don't have to be at work on Monday. So, that's revenue that you would be losing because those are going to be prime weekends. Typically, in our experience from weddings we do all over, those are very busy weekends for us, not only for weddings, but just big parties in general, so that would be a challenge, I would say.
So, since we're doing a little Q and A here, may I?
Please, absolutely.
So, just because there's a wedding in the pavilion does not close the park to other users. Am I wrong in that?
Yeah, I'm positive.
I mean, like, you could have a picnic, you have a large picnic over Labor Day in the park, and if you are booking for a large event and you need the pavilion as a resident for Labor Day, I would think that you would plan ahead and, and book it, and then, then that precludes any weddings.
Well, perhaps on those particular blackout dates, we, as we talk about conditions and looking at events moving forward, and I'm happy to bring back something for the council's eyes to look at and say, "Hey, this is what we're doing, that's not a problem." But for those three-day weekends, we're talking about blackouts, limit it to smaller-size events rather than the 200 number, limit it to smaller events.
Or maybe potentially eliminate, limiting it, or saying, on those three-day weekends, it would be a valet event versus.
Yeah, exactly.
So then, the event still can occur, the use of the park can still occur, and the parking won't be the issue.
Yeah, so certainly one consideration.
I mean, I think it's true, something's going on in the pavilion, it certainly doesn't impact the rest of the park, it probably impacts the rest of the park the most with respective parking.
Right.
So, I think that's a good suggestion.
So, I think that if we add that language or work with that.
Yeah, I think if you give the city manager the flexibility to make every project demonstrate that it has feasible parking, a parking plan for each event, I mean, it, it gives the city manager the, the responsibility of looking at what is booked for a weekend, and, and making sure that there aren't three weddings over a three-day weekend, or making sure that if they are, maybe once only got 25 people and 15 cars, or 30 cars, I don't know how weddings work. But, but limit that accordingly, but the parking plan, the traffic mitigation plan should, should be somewhat flexible if this is going to work at all, because you can't really anticipate, I mean, you can't say, on the, on a weekend in June, is it going to be a big wedding or a little wedding? If you only have one a day, it's still one a day with, with a certain amount of parking, and it's up to the city manager to mitigate that so it's not 600 cars in the park.
Perfect.
And oftentimes, weddings are in the, in the evening, when the park's almost done being used. They'll start at 5:00 o'clock at night.
Well, this is not just weddings that we're talking about, it's events. Events mean a corporate event, it could be a wedding, et cetera. So, yes, I agree with you, weddings often are in the evening, but, but they could be a corporate event, and we have had just recently a lot of large corporate events that George and I have spoken about, that are on three-day weekends and start in the morning, on Saturday mornings.
So, I apologize, Bill, but, so with that being said, vice mayor, is your vote still in favor of, as we've currently discussed, where obviously the city, town manager has the option, and we are going to work on that agreement with the city attorney?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and pass that motion into three to two. Let's move on to the next question.
And I'll, I'll bring back something for the council to.
Thank you very much. So, let's move on to item number 16. Award the tennis contract for, our contract for tennis, clinics and adoption of tennis keys policies. Mike Rosswade, please.
Actually, Steve Todd will be presenting this item as well.
Steve.
Mike, come here, Mike. He's got his badge.
Sorry. Make sure I've got the right papers with me this time.
Mayor, councilmembers, and the public, I'm here for this item to discuss tennis court issues at Holber Palmer Park. For the staff report, council's requested to consider the new contract for Alan Margot at the park's tennis facility. Alan's title, a professional, tennis professional, will be basically replaced with tennis camp instructor. He will do as he has done the past number of years with the town, that is, hold youth tennis camps a minimum of four times per year. Any other time spent at the course will be done as a regular key holder. Also, staff seeks direction on the tennis key policy. During the November and December city council meetings, discussion as to a new direction of tennis keys is taking place. In February, the fiscal, fiscal year will begin at the tennis courts. That's the month that we go out and change the locks. So, it'd be really good to have a direction from the city council at that time. Alan Margot thought was going to be here, and he's not here tonight, so I guess I'll try to answer any questions the best I can. I know city manager is also.
Thank you. Questions to the front council?
So, the contract, as I read, it really is really just a contract that's going to run for six months. So, we're really talking about a stopgap just to make sure that there's a camp this, this spring, and then, as we discussed at the last meeting, potentially competing it, as opposed to, you know, it's not a four, fourth thing. This contract, as it's written with the term in section two, just runs until the June.
That's correct, and, and we're certainly.
So, he's going to hold one, one, two-tier, the juniors and the children, you know, lower kids.
Right.
One camp, one camp, and it runs for.
There may be two, because currently he's under contract for one spring, two summer, and one fall.